Yeah, we're going to have the district, doing district business.
Yeah, and we'll put all our representatives on the plane now and send them back to watch.
It's actually good. Particularly if you... Okay, they said a couple are already...
I think I'm going to go on which show.
Right, that's good. So, it's going to be delayed. Must think...
Oh, well, it's a delay. That's a, that's a quarter of a lot.
There it goes. Is it along the way? Did you count it?
It's like twenty seconds.
Ooh.
Let's, uh, let's stop it and restart.
And twenty seconds is going to be a problem.
I told you myself, you're not, um...
You're not very, very spirited.
You're who?
That's who we listen to. He'll just get, he won't... Something's about twenty minutes. Can't make it.
I don't think you can back and forth with this much.
Yeah, you just...
Nothing's fine to, uh, cheat to shelter. Yes.
Yeah. Cause I'm just, it's not been twenty seconds anymore, but it's probably a good point.
Oh, yeah.
Longer than that, just can't find those.
I'm not even...
You should have walked around.
Yeah, I was walking around, yeah.
Okay, they need to stop. Let's go ten seconds. Fifteen seconds.
That's somebody who believes I'm on the F-bomb. All right, then once y'all leave me, I'm gonna go. There's a workshop, a workshop going on right now. C I P workshops.
Oh, yeah, really?
But the thing about it is Julie's, uh, a tenant.
She's, she's to be with, she should have been here.
She could be. Thanks, mom.
Is anybody actually on?
Uh, not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, can I hear all of your signature pages? Do you want these out? Okay. And then we'll be ready to get to everybody on. Let's see if we can get it. Just one right there.
Yeah. Oh, you don't want my head in that.
Okay.
You're in it.
See where Jason is.
Trying to see more, get our line. How that votes go.
Look. Please try.
Those are the current access students available.
Welcome. This news is provided by FreeCopper.com. Have a better go at the code public site or handle.
Yes. I mean, we ended it at the time because I'm sure you know my call service. Comfortable time to do that paper. We're seeing this number, I mean, all kinds of colors.
But, but you...
And you do...
Where can you get your teacher's license?
Some colors.
Which seems to be basic, uh, new, uh, area.
I'll give that, I'll give that, I'll give you that. So many of you get softening of the degree now. Some of the admine or conference. She's... She goes, I'm crazy about it. Why should I? Can't, the wonderful question, I'm not a young sporty guy, I'm sure those people around it set up. There's no way she could be able to, she is. She can't, I'll say she's permanent, the rest of the semester. And it doesn't make it matter what the grade is. She was in the lower, she was on the high in the grade. It was what I did. But she does, I want to pass it. I got one time, Walter, that's not a long, I mean, yeah. Yeah, and...
Hi, Jason. If these happen in the green, we need, we need a present, we call them and they were all over the farm. Hi. Yay. Where are we? How do we see everybody? I don't know how to make that happen. Let's see.
I'm trying to get something to figure out.
Can you see him?
I can see Keith, yeah.
Can you see it? You can't see Robert? Is he now?
And Susan's not, she's not for that.
Okay.
Uh, that's fine.
You don't see me. I'm only getting...
Let me see if I can turn you up a little bit. Everybody's gonna try to go to YouTube and just kind of watch everything. And then you can kind of see. Okay, what was next?
Somebody should just dial from this.
All right. Thank you, family. I'm going to go out.
Let me try, I'm not...
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, we just, we just... It's really clear and the answer now is yes. I'm sorry, this camera. And, uh, the paper didn't last either whole time. As essential, as well as professional services, if you give it to somebody, professional services to an essential company. So...
Okay.
So, it should be covered as well, if you have any clients in that area.
I doubt there's many on the spot.
He doesn't have any, he doesn't have any clients that are in the energy business or...
Yeah, four watching now. But it could be three.
Yes.
They are all gonna watch.
Yeah, you, you, you can, um, you can look on page, uh...
What about, um, here, does it take...
Let me find it for you. It's, it's a good twenty second delay.
On the phone or on the... You know what? Oh, I want to now. You know, so is it Zoom also a little delayed?
Yeah.
So, I tested it. Um, this morning with one of my coworkers. It's not too bad. This is the radio, isn't it?
Yeah, so Jay, uh, Jackie's covered, cause they cover real estate services.
Oh, they're in the industries that are not covered.
And then it's actually residential and, uh, residential real estate.
Yeah, and he's the one that kept the groundwater dispensaries up.
Uh...
It was a whole thing, it didn't matter.
Should I go ahead and dial in this other part?
Yeah.
For instance, this is an opportunity for... Then should I try and dial sort of call them?
Yes, thanks, it's covered. We just, quite frankly, named my father.
Steve, do you think that's a good idea?
Watching, it's certainly not better to do the green.
Really, you made through the phone?
It's funny, now I'm drinking some... You expect supplies, uh? Is that it? That's, that's...
Well, that makes sense. Always...
Yeah, it's part of the point, yeah. But this is... It's a twenty second delay and so if you're gonna find me calling for about ten seconds before we ask a question, seven seconds.
Can I use the...
Don't, don't make any comment there.
Our phone. Okay.
Well, if you know any...
People are watching right now. We have a monitoring on your phone.
One of the people is me, I've got you on here too, but you just, you're still on the phone as well.
I agree.
Robert?
Yes.
Have you had a chance to find out more?
I have not, but it works, seeing your name, whatever. Oh, there's, here's a, there's a way to record.
It was amazing.
That's what she said. She said, I'm gonna be jealous. So much nicer to be verbal. I don't think it, I don't think it really aggravated.
The start of conference recording, step one. Your victim, the recording, is started.
Okay.
Okay, so it's five thirty. You wanna give a minute?
So Susan and Jay are on.
Susan, you're Keith and Jackie. Jackie, why are you here? These are your...
Belongs to my child.
And Keith is good?
Keith is, yeah, Keith is good, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying to just...
That's a...
Yeah, it was, uh, on our, on our agenda, or at least we're still a bit scattered, but it resolved the concern.
Yes, tiny delay, okay.
One second.
One second?
One second.
Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order. It's five thirty one. And before we start, uh, I want to go ahead and, uh, go through the protocol for this unusual meeting during this unusual time of the COVID-19 virus. Uh, we are following the proper protocol and recommendations of the CDC and of Harris County, uh, keeping proper social distancing, uh, and for anybody who is deemed to be, uh, at a higher risk, uh, they are actually at home and observing, uh, FaceTime. Uh, so there are three council members that are on FaceTime, J H Meyer, Lioris Vaughn, and Keith Brown. And in attendance, uh, here at the dais, we have Susan Schwartz, myself, Barbara Lord, and Erica. Uh, we also have staff members, uh, our city staff, uh, Steve Smith, Erica Polo Works, and many other functions. Right now, he's the IT guy helping run all the infrastructure on the IT to make this happen. Uh, with Karen Glenn, the city administrator, on a table, uh, far away from the dais here, uh, to make sure we get proper distancing. Uh, then we have an acting city secretary, our, our, uh, city council, uh, or board, and, uh, also our, uh, our, uh, financial officer, treasurer.
Dinner finance.
Finance director is the actual role. Uh, and also our appreciative, Chief Ray Schultz has made time out of his schedule to stop by and, uh, attend the meeting. Uh, he's also keeping proper distance and will be giving a report on the COVID virus and what its impact is on M V P D and our community and what measures we're taking. Uh, we're relying on him to give those updates, so when we get to the public comments section of this meeting, if anybody has questions as it relates to the COVID-19 virus, we're gonna ask that, uh, you hold that back and, and Chief can help address those questions. So, as far as the protocol for today, um, uh, we, we have the city council members calling in. Uh, staff, uh, is working with the council members, desiring to participate by FaceTime, as I said. Uh, and the council members, uh, are never using old. Uh, they will be, uh, streaming the entire time. If they become disconnected, we will stop the meeting, wait for them to be reconnected, to make sure that we, uh, continue to have a full attendance. Uh, we won't be on the forum, but we want to make sure all council members have full attendance. We ask that if any council members on FaceTime, um, want to speak, uh, speak loudly and clearly for all to hear, so that your voice is picked up on the phone, um, or on FaceTime, I mean, or on, uh, Facebook Live. Um, this is a very unique situation, as everybody knows. Uh, we hope to be back to a regular council format next month. Uh, however, if it does continue, and we need to continue to keep the distance and CDC guidelines, we will, uh, replicate this, this procedure for any, uh, meetings that we hold within the city. Uh, we are working to make this as efficient as possible, but there will be delays. Uh, we've noticed that there's a slight delay in the Facebook Live. Uh, that requires us to make pauses at, uh, certain times. I will be doing so to let it catch up before we have any meaningful, uh, public comment periods and prior to any votes. Uh, if anybody has comments, um, there will be opportunities for anybody attending, uh, the meeting or people on the phone or people on Facebook Live to make comments at the particular times and we'll be sure to indicate when those times arrive. Now, as these meetings go, if you have not attended one, the city secretary will be reading each item on the agenda and will indicate, um, if there are any comments from the public, uh, over this time. Um, we'll be monitoring, the city secretary will be monitoring and seeing if we have comments for each, uh, agenda item. Every person should identify themselves before speaking every time, um, whether that person is attending the meeting in person or by electronic conference. And that applies both to me as mayor, all the council members, and staff, uh, as well as any public comments that people are making. We need their, their name, as well as the address, if it's a resident, uh, so that we can have that into our records. Um, I will do my best to make sure that everybody knows who's speaking, and I will be acknowledging, uh, the council members and staff who speak, if, if they do not. Uh, and hopefully it will, will go smoothly. Um, I will also repeat each motion in second as to who made each motion, as well as who made the second for any particular event. And I'll have the, uh, city attorney watching me to make sure I do it. Uh, so if you do hear a, a repeat of something or a pause, it may be because I'm being, uh, scolded and correcting my procedure. As far as public participation goes, we encourage people to participate. Um, while the meeting is, is it, is it going on, we ask that you mute the, uh, phone unless you're speaking, so that we don't have a bunch of background noise. Also, um, if you do pick up the phone, do use your handset rather than a speaker phone, uh, whenever possible, so that we can hear you clearly and it makes it into the record. Um, and then everybody in the meeting, do keep in mind that we do have lots of different people involved and lots of different technologies involved. So, uh, try to keep sidebar comments to a minimum. We'll try to keep paper shuffling to a minimum, uh, to reduce any confusion or inability to hear the meeting while participating electronically. Thank you for listening to all of that and, uh, and for those of you who are attending the meeting, thank you very much for making extra efforts to do so. Uh, we'll try to make this as efficient as possible, um, along the way. So, the first thing I did was call a order. That's item number one. Uh, if you could read out item number two.
Item number two, pledge allegiance.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do the pledge allegiance. I'll go ahead and, and do it this, this... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again?
Item number three, citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak to council relating to agenda and non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes. If the topic this information to address is on the agenda, the speaker can either speak at this time or defer comments until such time items discussed. Speakers are required to address council at the microphone and give their name and address prior to voicing their concerns. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council will not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. Items that cannot be referred to the city staff for action may be placed on the agenda of the future city council meeting.
Okay, so are there any citizen comments? If they are, please take your phone off of mute. Any comments by chat, Steve? No? Okay, with no public citizen comments at this point, we will proceed.
Item number four, fire commission liaison report.
Okay, for the fire commission liaison report, uh, we'll have, uh, our fire lia, fire, uh, commission liaison Keith Brown provide that report.
All right, as you know, we're up a lot going on, uh, and, uh, I'll just run down, uh, the calls for the month. We had, uh, twenty-six calls from that Moncrief Village. All were, uh, were handled in a timely fashion and, and recorded, uh. For the villages that were honored, we had seventy-seven, uh, E N S calls, were handled. The largest ever, uh, nineteen of those were for the second hand, uh, so it was thirty-two percent of the total from March first to March twentieth. Uh, the first quarter strategic plan is pretty much on my, that you have that in your packages. And, uh, the initial budget workshop for the fire department was to have been held last week, but was postponed, competing with experience, and will be rescheduled for a later date. And that's all I have to say.
Is there any, uh, change to the expected timeline for the region starts in Keith, or do you know at this point?
I don't know at this point. It's, I know they're not, so I suspect it has to be put back.
Okay. Any other questions, uh, for Keith Brown liaison for the fire commission? Hearing none, we'll go forward.
Uh, item number five, police commissioner report.
For the police commission report, we will have, uh, the chief of the Moncrief Village Police Department, Ray Schultz, give that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the monthly report for the month of February. Uh, I'll be brief with the, uh, the regular part of the report, and I'm gonna spend a little bit more time on our operations as we prepare for the coronavirus and some of the changes and adjustments that we've made in staffing as well as delivering services. Our budget, uh, so far, we continue to be under budget. Uh, that's primarily because we've had one vacancy for one officer. The good news is, is we have hired an officer. We've made an offer. Uh, she's accepted.
Excuse me for just a moment, Keith. Uh, Steve, we seem to be getting a, a double feedback. Is there an extra microphone open in there somewhere?
Is anyone else getting a order? Are you getting it?
Yes, I've been getting it, but, um, I'm kind of...
Work through it.
Is that better?
Yeah, but I'm almost down, Lauren, so you're gonna give me a break.
Okay.
We'll address that. Does any of you address now or when the chief?
We'll do it after that.
Okay.
Okay, going back to staffing. Uh, as I said, we made an offer to a, to a lady. She will start on the sixth of April. This will get us to one hundred percent staffing for both our sworn and civilian components, and we're very excited about that. It's been, been a little while since we've been fully staffed.
Dispatch is also fully staffed?
Fully staffed, plus we have an extra half-time person. Two years ago, the commission did authorize us to overfill. We made the decision to overfill in the area of dispatchers. We have a part-time person, and she is at the rate. Should we find ourselves being short dispatcher because of the coronavirus, we can very quickly move her to a full-time duty, but she's completely certified, operational, and as a matter of fact, working, working today, uh, due to her skills. We were requested by the police commission to look into increasing our ransomware and IT coverage from T M L. Uh, we looked into that and we were able to make an increase from tier one to tier two coverage, uh, for a grand total of forty dollars a year premiums, which is an excellent deal. That actually doubled our aggregate coverage, uh, for, uh, for cybersecurity and ransomware. So, we were glad to have that done. We were able to hold a budget workshop that was held on September, I'm sorry, on February twenty-fifth, and the budget is moving forward, and we feel very strongly that we will have a budget on time, even with the additional delays as a result of, uh, issues occurring with the virus as well. The A L P R system continues to be very effective. In the month of February, we have a total of sixty hits. We recovered three stolen vehicles, a set of stolen license plates. Uh, and we were also able to use the system to locate and identify a vehicle that's involved in an hit-and-run accident. We near one locations of the A L P R. A witness had seen another vehicle that was right next to the suspect vehicle. We found that on the A L P R, and the next vehicle right behind it was our suspect in the hit-and-run. So, uh, the system continues to be a very valuable asset for us. As you can see, I am wearing body cameras. Uh, body cameras were issued to all officers. They are now operational as of the, uh, eleventh of February, and they have already paid off very well. Uh, as you saw, uh, last week, we had officers exposed, uh, to somebody who was quarantined for the coronavirus. The officers happened to be wearing the body cameras. We actually used their body camera footage to view how they acted in the house because they had concerns about what they had touched. They went in the house, they didn't use their P P E, they had gloves on, and were able to watch the entire event, what they did, what they touched, and saw that the only thing they touched, they didn't touch their faces or anything like that, but they did touch their gun belt with their rubber gloves and were able to properly disinfect that. So, it made them feel good, it made us feel good that, uh, they didn't inadvertently touch their face or, or something else on their uniforms. Uh, and we also have a late conference call with Houston City Attorney's Office on the right way in access for the A L P R systems that are in Houston. An attorney has been assigned to us, and that is, uh, moving along very, very well. Obviously, we'll be delayed in light of what's happening right now. Response time for Bunker Hill, there were five priority events. Response time from first ring to officer on the scene was 2 minutes and 20 seconds. So a great job by our folks getting to important calls. And that is pretty much it for the regular work. As far as the coronavirus update, we made the decision a couple of weeks ago when we first started to see the virus spread across the United States. We immediately secured our building, we stopped doing public tours, fingerprinting. The building has been completely sanitized and has been remaining secure for the last two weeks. No one is allowed in the building other than employees only. All of our employees are prepared to adjust their schedules as necessary. And we've stocked the station with additional provisions and supplies. Pretty much, we were the first ones out there buying the hand sanitizer and toilet paper and paper towels, but it put us in a good position to be prepared. On the 20th of this month, we rolled out a new component of our B-Link system that allows residents with special needs who are ill or need check-on needs performed to register. We've had great results with that. So far, to date, we have four residents in Bunker Hill who told us that they currently have someone in the household who is sick or ill. There's four in Piney Point and 200ers Creek. For special needs specifically, where they may need some assistance, should the stay-at-home orders be for a prolonged period of time. Bunker Hill, we have 116 residents who registered under that designation, Piney Point 54 and Hunter's Creek 122. We also asked residents if they were at high risk for the coronavirus to please register with us. We have 34 residents in Bunker Hill, 78 in Piney Point, and 21 in Hunter's Creek who let us know that. Then we also offered a service of called check-on needs. These are residents who are currently ill or recently had surgery, who just need someone to check on and make sure that they're okay. We have one resident in Bunker Hill and one in Piney Point who registered and we contact them each day to make sure that they're okay. Residents appreciate that. We did make a change on Monday, our admin staff is working from home. They have the ability to remote in and access their systems, so this is day two, that's working well. We did have two exposures on Friday morning that I already mentioned. The good news is, is the people who are quarantined have checked okay. Those officers are being scheduled to return to work after they finish their days off. We have been provided with an additional N95 masks. We only had one of those per vehicle. Second Baptist Church has supplied. We now have a mask per employee, so the officers definitely appreciate that. The mission that we've changed to is we moved to a high presence mission throughout the community. You'll see the officers driving around much more often with their cruise lights on, sitting at high visible areas and intersections. We're spending even more time out in the community. We have backed off on our traffic enforcement. Unfortunately, we still find ourselves having to occasionally do traffic enforcement, make some arrests. Since we've gone to this modified schedule, we've had unfortunately still arrest two drunk drivers and an aggressive driver who decided that he wanted to race through the villages at very high speed. The ALPR system has also been a very valuable asset to us. We've made a couple arrests with the ALPR to include a serial mail thief who was in Bunker Hill. And this particular person had master keys to mailboxes, as well as a postal inspector fake ID and stole a car. The good news is the postal inspector's office found out about it as well. They came into custody and ended up taking that case over. This particular suspect had hundreds of checks, hundreds of pieces of mail from throughout the area. We continue to monitor things, to include monitoring nearby stores now that have opened up for senior only, or senior early shopping. We were at Duane's this morning in Headway, we're working with the other departments that have an additional presence. So our residents feel comfortable when they go out to get supplies and...
Or the other departments have been receptive to the help?
Yes. Matter of fact, Chief Goddard in Headway said, "We welcome you here all the time, appreciate the additional help and presence." All along the I-10 corridor. So we continue to monitor developments. We're prepared to make adjustments to our schedule, our personnel and health as needed. And are ready as the new requests from the county judge take effect in the 1990s. I'll stand by your questions.
As far as the enforcement of that, is it going to be here as county constables? Or is there VPD being involved in the enforcement of the stay-at-home work safe?
Well, the county judge has instructed all law enforcement agencies within the county to do the enforcement. Specifically, the constable's office is volunteered to address the public space issue, so primarily businesses. So folks that see businesses that are operating outside of the judge's order are requested to call the constable's office. And they're addressing those commercial establishments.
Do that also include playgrounds? Do that other two schools have playgrounds? Apparently those are supposed to be forbidden.
So the schools are primarily being patrolled by ISD as well as us. I actually will address that in tomorrow morning. Today we'll be like careful about reminding parents that obviously, a lot of people get outside and very quickly you can get cross-poked inside the house, especially if you have a bunch of kids or convicts. So outside is a good place to be, but playgrounds unfortunately are not.
And then churches, do any of our churches have playgrounds?
Some of the churches do because they have childcare associated with them. It's pretty common for residents when churches are in session, sometimes go over and borrow those a little bit. As well, some of the churches also have some basketball courts, so we'll be keeping an eye on those as well as part of that public gathering directive to not have those type of interactions.
Any other areas that we should be concerned about within the city of Bunker Hill that fall within the order that would be the wrong one, as you say? That we can help, we can help you or put something forward from a city perspective?
We're very fortunate in the fact that there's no high density housing. There's no public accessible businesses, typical business situation in Bunker Hill Village. So we continue to be fully staffed, our folks are working well, making adjustments. Everyone's got extra uniforms and clothes here. Should there be an event at their house, we've got arrangements made that we can house our people here so we don't have to take a chance on getting infected from somebody at their house or by someone else.
Well, if you need any backup from our staff or the facilities here, as always, feel free to add.
The staff has been great. Mr. Smith has created a map for us of B-Link properties. It's basically using the GIS capabilities of everyone who has a registered B-Link account and then overlay, so now we know which households do not have B-Link accounts. Obviously, we're trying to...
That's similar to what 200ers Creek did?
Yes.
Perfect.
So we'll be working on that as well with the city staff to get to the properties that do not have an active account. So we can have that as a tool to communicate with our residents correctly.
Wonderful. Good job. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you for your hard work.
Mayor, one thing that we have been doing, just to not inundate a lot of our residents with a lot of emails. The chief's been doing this daily email and so we've talked through...
Overnight?
Yes. And then it's weekly too. If there's something in particular, we just feel like, you know, everybody kind of starts watching for the chief's email. And that's been a good means of communication for us as well. He's kind of working as our spokesperson and I really appreciate that and all the work that Chief Schultz has been doing.
But are there any issues that the council feels need to be revealed to the public in that?
We can do that, right. But it's just, you know, at the same time, we're just kind of trying to monitor that so where people don't get too many quickly.
I agree. I'm getting... We gotta raise together. All right. Thank you. Next.
Item six, consideration and possible action to adopt ordinance number 2519, an ordinance of the city of Bunker Hill Village, Texas, declaring a public health emergency and declaring state of disaster. Providing for separability and providing an effective...
Okay, so what this is involving is in order to receive federal funding from FEMA and other agencies, from all these bills that you've heard about being passed at a federal level, in order for us to receive any of that money, should we become necessary, we need to declare an emergency within the city. To do that, we are keeping records of that, but it's an administrative act that I need to do and I need council to approve it to be more than just, what, 10 days? If I do it myself, but if I do it, it can be 30 days to be the emergency ordinance. It also allows us to set a curfew if it's being necessary. And I would defer completely to what the Memorial Village Police Department Chief Schultz has as far as recommendations on that. We had a meeting last week, wasn't you, where we talked amongst the three villages involved in the Memorial Village's Police Department. And all of us agreed that if the city of Houston were to institute a curfew, it only makes sense we do the same to be consistent. And the timing needs to be consistent. And clearly, within a single police department, we need to be all in agreement as it relates to the curfew. So we can't bring the specifics of the curfew to you as far as the dates, times, things of that nature. But the plan will be to mirror, mimic what the city of Houston's doing. And I think party it was 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, was it?
5:00 AM, I believe.
5:00 AM, 10:00 to 5:00 is what it was. And we don't think it's going to be any more extreme than that. But that would be the next step. The Harris County Judge instituted, as most of you know, the ordinance, stay-home, work-safe plan. And if that, we don't see a reduction in the number of people that are infected with the virus as well as the hospitalization of those individuals. The next thing we want to do is put in place curfews just to make sure people stay home. So we want to have the ability to do that without calling special counsel. So that is the, what's on the table. Anything to add to that, Karen?
No. It also just gives us other opportunities if other things kind of come through, through the governor's office. One of which is, another item on the election is, another item is the election in name. So declaring that emergency just gives us the opportunity to act for our individual safety.
So this time we'll take a break, wait for the video to catch up. And see if anybody has public comment or questions on this topic. Not seeing any, I'll ask for a motion. Firstly, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2519, which is the one to declare a state of disaster.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. So council member Schwartz made the motion and council member Coe seconded the motion. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to add?
Aye.
Anyone want to vote? No? Okay. Pass. The next motion, did you read that one yet?
I haven't read that one. Consideration and possible action to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Bunker Hill Village, Texas, supporting the mayor in light of the COVID-19 outbreak in the city's declaration of disaster and using his discretion in conjunction with the Memorial Village's Police Department to declare a curfew or mandate a court.
So we'll need a, see if there's any public comment on this particular agenda item. Seeing no public comment, I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Let me second.
I'll second.
So council member Rosenbaum made the motion, council member Schmeyer seconded the motion. Any further discussion as it relates to the motion of setting up a curfew? Declaring a curfew or mandate a court? I'm hearing anything, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone want to vote? Motion passes.
Next, consideration and possible action to adopt ordinance 2521 and ordinance of the city of Bunker Hill Village, Texas, oh, I'm sorry, did I read that too fast? I'm sorry. Extending the general election previously called for Saturday, May 2nd, 2020, to November 3rd, 2020, as allowed by proclamation of the governor issued on March 18th, 2020. The call election being for the purpose of electing three councilman positions. Position numbers one, two, and three. Providing details relating to the holding of such election, providing for separability, containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Okay, so this particular motion is discussing the possibility based on what the governor indicated that we can actually postpone or extend the election that we have scheduled from May 2nd, 2020 to November 3rd, as was read. And I believe we have a public comment on this subject. So Clara, do you want to speak up and provide your comment?
She's on the chat.
Okay.
Mayor, clear council, 226 plantation, that's taken. I agree that the election should be moved to November 3rd, 2020 from May 2nd, 2020.
And just as a point of reference, she is our election judge, so we do take her opinion seriously. And we received an email earlier today where one of the candidates for the contested position, I believe it's position one, decided, at least in written form, of an email, that they were going to withdraw from the election, which we're checking into whether, because of the withdrawal from the election, if an election will be required. And so we're going to check into that in Florida November. But regardless, we do need a motion to push the deadline.
I'll make that motion.
Same. Okay, we have a motion by council member Schwartz and I believe Schmeyer as well. And then a second by council member Coe. Any further public discussion on this point? Which item? Boy, Keith, you flip.
I'm not there, that's not original, you're here with God, my idea.
Pretty amazing. I've never seen you with that angle. There you go. All right, with no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to vote? Okay, passage of unanimous. Next.
Consideration and possible action to authorize the city administrator to approve a contract to install a temporary fueling station at City Hall Memorial Village Police Station in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
I'll take that and ask my...
Do you want to do some background through the station?
Mayor and council, as everyone is aware, our current fueling station is at the Village Fire Department Station. And with the upcoming remodeling of the station, those tanks will go away for about 12 months. We have been investigating various methods of trying to make sure that we can supply fuel for the city. And so one of the things that we look at is number one, providing gas cars to the local gas stations. And that works out pretty well. However, if we should have some sort of catastrophe or major event and we cannot get fuel from those stations, that creates a issue for us. And not only for us, it's for all the villages as well as Memorial Village's Police Department. And so we look into getting temporarily fueling tanks here at City Hall. And so we look into getting temporarily fueling tanks here at City Hall, and that is turning out to be probably the best solution, because we'll have at least a two-week reserve, probably more. And we have, should council approve this, we have offered this to not only Bunker Hill, but the Memorial Villages Police Department, also the Hedwick Police Department, and the other villages as well, which everyone is sharing the cause.
Call the board.
We have made it available out there, but we haven't heard back from everyone.
Okay.
We're kind of limited to the size packs that we selected, which is a two-thousand gallon gasoline tank, and I believe it is a five-hundred gallon diesel tank. We do have some diesel-powered equipment here. All of the cost of the gasoline is co-sold, and there may be some tax savings there as well. I'm not exactly sure, I can give you a different kind of answer on how much tax savings, but there possibly could be some. There is, most of this expense is related to getting electricity out to the pumps. It will have a key card system where you'll enter your ID and vehicle and mileage, and we'll have the same type of reports that we get from the Village Fire Department currently. So, we located that here, we did meet with the police department as well, made sure that it was properly located, so that cars can get in and out, it's properly light at night, those types of things. So I think we're as well prepared as we possibly can for providing fuel for our village.
Is there any creative way to get this under the payment of money that's been coming in for the COVID virus?
I am not sure.
Let's explore it.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Do you think we should also get a camera for the area to discourage possible thieves or whatnot, and we know who and what is using the gasoline?
Well, the chief of gesturing, the Village Police Department already has a camera directed that way.
Okay.
So I think it's, three cameras directed that way. So, I think it may be in good shape, and if we need to add another one, you can do those pretty easily, the ring and things of that nature, some commercially available products.
That's one of the items that we looked at, considered in locating where the tanks are. Trying to make sure that they have access, it's properly secured, and properly lit at night.
Just out of curiosity, how much gasoline and diesel do we use on weekly basis?
What we are looking
That is what they use over there.
From various numbers I've got here, the city uses about three hundred gallons a month. Police Department uses about two thousand a month, somewhere around that range, chief, somewhere around there. Hedwick Police Department uses something less than that, somewhere around a thousand fifteen hundred gallons per month, and that's all the numbers that I've had come back in. The other thing I want to mention about the fuel tanks is, we're equipping them with an automatic refill message.
Oh, nice.
So when the tanks get to a certain level, a signal gets sent to the supplier, and they automatically make those replacements.
Tell you that takes longer. Steve, you know what, I'm trying to find, is that what you see?
I did speak with the
Could you repeat the question, because I don't think it was clear?
The question was, we know what the fire department is going to be doing for their supply of fuel. I did talk to Chief Foster, and he mentioned that they would be most likely using gas cars, you know, the their proximity to the gas stations there in the area. And so he indicated that they would not be participating. Obviously, we would need them some type of emergency, absolutely, we'll work with everyone to make sure that that fuel is near and available, if the fire department has need for it.
And you say here that it's temporary, is, what's the difference between temporary and making it permanent?
Good question. So, the tanks that we are looking at are above ground, they're not very, they are, they have self-contained double wall structure, so that should anything happen, the fuel still will be contained. There's some different fueling requirements, should we decide to say, oh, we want to make this more permanent. We are going to go ahead and do the electrical as if it is permanent, so if we have to do something with a tank changeout, something of that nature, maybe a larger tank, electricity will already be sized to handle any sort of upgrade.
Are we renting these equipment, or are we purchasing?
The tanks are rolled into the top of the fuel.
Oh, okay. So, make the money on fuel, and supply that tank.
And we would be coming back with an interlocal agreement, once we have more of everything detailed out. We just wanted to make sure, you know, the direction was there, the cost made sense, and some of those details on how we do our billing, what do we do about insurance, and how do we share in those costs? We will, we'll do an interlocal agreement, whoever wants to participate, and that will become a factor of the council.
And so right now, you said, permanently, have we, just the whole city, or just complete the department?
They, I have very few actual city vehicles, and so we give the small amount of fuel to those as well as the police department.
Okay, and then the entire police department is on board? And then, if it were to be Pine Point and Hunter's Creek, would it be for their, they don't have much
That would be minimal also.
It means two credit cards.
Correct.
And then, the water authority, is there anything else, anybody else forgetting?
I talked to the fire department.
They said no.
Yeah, we're not real sure if it makes sense for Spring Valley, you know, does it surprise?
Yeah, north of Mike's, right.
So, anyway.
Do they currently use the fire department?
Yes.
But they're closer. Should we extend at least a option?
We can, and we are not sure when the tanks will, when the fire department will actually be going down. The chief had sent us an email.
You got an email too, Chief Schultz, right?
It was originally ten days, but that was before the most recent changes with COVID-19.
Okay.
So it does give us a little bit more time, but we
And how quickly could we do it, if we're given the drop dead day of your fuels cut off?
Typically, every year, the answer, very weak, we would have tanks before the weekend.
Wow. Oh, wow.
Nice.
Even with all the work that needs to be done. Okay.
So do we need a motion authorizing this, at this point, up to five thousand?
And that would be the city's share.
Our city's here. We had to do an interlocal agreement, we need to authorize that too?
Not right now.
Okay.
We wanted to do a not-to-exceed amount, make sure everyone was comfortable with the cost of that, and then we'll bring back the interlocal agreements, because then we'll be sharing in the fuel costs. And then we would be sharing in the cost of all the construction or the temporary needs.
Is there any budget impact?
I don't think it will be. I mean
Maybe there'll be some savings on that.
Okay. We've got, we got a summary that says four thousand dollars, and then Jim that says five.
We did, because I like adding a contingency once he gives me a number. He's usually really good, but I just like putting in a little contingency.
I like Steve's number better.
And just to make sure, you know, I'll hold this back here, when we were talking with
our person, he learned something after he gave us that four thousand dollar number, how hard it's for itself, and things like that, can from the supplier. So I think that we're probably be right around the four thousand dollar, just like you know.
I'll make a motion, so do move forward with it.
That's fine.
We have a motion from Councilmember Thode, and a second from Councilmember Schwartz, and only some time for any public discussion. Karen Dunn, I'll get over to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Keith?
Aye, I'm, I'm four hundred, trying to say better, no.
Okay. So passage of unanimous.
Next, Mayor's report.
Okay, Mayor's report, all sorts of activities. So just to give you a debrief of what I'm sitting in on as far as meetings, some are daily, some are weekly, some are twice a week, trying to stay on top of it, I'm trying to sit in as many meetings as I can, meetings I cannot attend, I'm asking Karen to sit in, or other members of the staff to cover, and then provide me the feedback that we need. If any of you wants to sit in on any of these, I'm happy to let you either join me, or take my place on a particular meeting, and debrief the staff, and that's what I typically do afterwards, I talk to Karen and tell her that we need to do this, that, the other, this change, that change. The one meeting that happens daily is at four PM, it's with the State Department, it's the State Department of State Health Service, Health Services, yeah, that's the one. And it lasts an hour, they spend about first fifteen to twenty minutes talking about updates, it's geared more to the healthcare industry and the healthcare arena, but I find it the most technically, the most, the best information, because you get the technical information from the medical side. So the numbers sometimes are a little delayed, but they look at trends, they look at patterns, they look at how it's being treated, they're trying to dispel rumors, which I find extremely helpful, and they're just talking the facts. I mean, they're a bunch of doctors, they're a bunch of clinicians, a bunch of people run elderly homes, things of that nature. And so, from that meeting, what I typically get is two things, one, the number of statewide cases, and the second one, the increase in the number of individuals inheriting, that I'm primarily interested in. And so, again, you can see the trends, you can see the total numbers, they've also recently added the number that are hospitalized, which is I, it's low. And so, I think it's been increased as they do more testing, as you know, it's taken a while to get the tests out, they've also been discussing that, and why the tests are delayed, there's two different types of test, and, you know, the media's talking about a lot, and the doctors are talking about another, and it's funny, you get all the real facts of what's going on, and what's delayed, what's not, what's coming from the federal government, what's coming from the state, how it's being rolled out. There's a lot of moving parts, I will say. With anything I've learned, there's a lot of crossover governmental agencies trying to solve these problems. And each one has their role, but they kind of trip over each other a lot, and there's a lot of duplication of effort. So, but I've learned a lot from those meetings, that's every day at four. Also, they're very short notice, but we typically, once a week, sometimes twice if there's a lot going on, have a meeting for a governor act, has all the mayors and emergency management folks in meetings. And I will say, I'm impressed with the job he's done. He is trying to cut through the red tape, he is trying to find out where people are tripping over each other, where the problems are, and getting rid of that. He's, they're more well-prepared as a state for dealing with emergencies, I will say, of any type. Now whether they were ready for the scale of this, or, you know, what is involved in this particular situation, of course not. Have they learned stuff? Yeah, they're changing along the way, they're learning things. But we should feel very glad that we are in the state of Texas, in my opinion, they're well ahead of a lot of the other states. I don't know if you've seen the number from Louisiana, but oh my gosh, they got a problem over there. Hopefully it doesn't turn into a crink, and they all end up here. I don't know if we can reopen the dome, but that's where they need to go in your state. But maybe that, so it's interesting watching how Texas has handled this versus other states. But they, what I like about him is he's putting into place a, not a one-size-fits-all-type solution, he understands certain hot, he calls them hot areas, the hot zones is the term he uses, and he goes, he has a hot zone up by Dallas, and there's a hot zone in Harris County, Houston area, there's a hot zone in San Antonio, there's a hot zone here, and a hot zone there, and those are areas that need resources, those are areas that they want to focus on, and then the other ones need to, you know, follow certain activities, but they don't have to do everything. And so he's not over, he's not over-practicing anything, and not overdoing things, so, which is literally enough. So they're not, it's not one-size-fits-all, where they're forcing people to do stuff that makes no sense for that community. And then, we also have, twice a week, Harris County elected official meeting with Harris County, much less organized, a lot of confusion, always late, not nearly as impressive as the state outfit that we're getting. Also, much more directed questions. The state, the state meetings typically have one or two people that will, are more agitator types, that just want to poke in and cause problems. The Harris County one are probably the most vocal, individuals that just pop out and are very confrontational, I would say, and trying to get their needs resolved. As you get a little more and more vocal, they get louder and louder. But in the Harris County one, they are good, again, about giving what information they do have, they're talking more about what they're planning to do, not what they've done, or things of that nature, there's just a lot of planning going on. And eventually, it gets around to implementing. The one driving the county is, and if you've watched the news, you probably picked up on this, is Sylvester Turner. He is, whatever Sylvester Turner says and the City of Houston does, Harris County is just kind of following along, carrying his briefcase. So, for example, on this order that we've been talking about, all the mayors were on it, and they weren't really interested in what we had to say, they ended up in the order, I was glad to see, a lot of the stuff we asked for ended up in there. But anything that Mayor Turner said, oh yes, we'll take care of that immediately, and all that, and his whole paragraphs on what he did, and we're like mixed into a massive catch-all paragraph. But I will say, the Memorial Villages mayors are unified, all of us. We all are trying to get across the same message, it's being heard, because we are a collective group, we're not a bunch of splattered off individuals. We have, as we affectionately call Mayor Ramsey, our godfather, who's sort of up there directing the show, and then you have the rest of us, that are kind of popping in with what we find of value to our particular jurisdiction. So, that's twice a week, we get that report. And then, and some of them are spontaneous ones that just pop up, Karen shoots it to me, and I get on as quickly as I can, if there's something urgent. Harris County tells us about the press release after they do it. Abbott always calls us before he does a press release. We always hear from him before they actually do the release, which has been nice as well. He didn't need to do that, but it feels really nice that they actually will tell us, we know about it before, but that's the general public. Harris County hear about it after. Houston, clearly, we don't hear about what they do, just for now, we're going to do what we're going to do. And also, on the way over, I talked to our Congress member, Lizzie Fletcher, particularly addressing when relief is going to come, and kind of the dysfunction that I'm seeing in Congress, in trying to get this passed, it seems like everybody should be fighting the same fight, and not being as partisan as they're being in this battle. I said, hey, people want to see less partisanship, and let's get this through. And she reminded me that this is the third piece of legislation that they're dealing with. The first one sent emergency supplies and made sure the infrastructure's set up, that was done immediately, and that was in the billions, low billions, and then the second one was in the tens of billions, and that was the one that gave the school launches, took care of the unemployment insurance, COBRA, all these other things, that took care of the employers and the family, and now they're doing the individual, and trying to do the checks to the individuals, small business loans to businesses, things of that nature. The first two kind of went through quickly, it was, everybody was getting it done, they were kind of swimming, and felt like they needed to do it. This one, they've set up a battle, and people are just filling it full of pork, and that was wild, and I go, I don't, I'm getting rid of all this pork, we don't need all these special little things that are going on. But when, she came back and said, they're really close, just FYI, if anybody asks you, they're really close. She just got a text, as I was hanging up my phone, said the two-yard line in the Senate. So they're about to cross the goal line, and I said, I hope there's not an instant replay. It's way too long, they're like, but hopefully that crosses the goal line in the Senate. She said, from there, if it goes to the House, and there's not any big problems in the Senate bill, and they're looking at the comparison between the House bill that they're trying to get passed, and the Senate bill right now to get passed, and the Senate bill right now, and seeing if they can live with it. If they do vote for it, it'll be under unanimous consent, it'll be in law very quickly. If it doesn't, they'll have to go back to Capitol Hill. Right now, they're at home, they don't want to go back to Capitol, of course, they're probably need to get that passed. And so I said, that'll be a good signal if we can get that done and move on and get back to the nation's business, but we need to, they need to be along in the fight. I think they're far away from understanding the concerns and the fear that people have, and the panic that can set in very quickly if things don't start getting resolved. People are gonna be sitting at home, not doing anything for a few weeks, they're gonna go stir crazy. I mean, we're seeing more people walk around the villages than I've ever seen. I mean, people are out, and people are talking, and people are getting frustrated. And I also mentioned to her that I think a result of this is going to be a lot of mental health problems, because people have anxiety, people have concerns. I mean, just in my own family, they're all worried about, you know, they're losing, people are losing their senior years, people are at high school, and that's what they've been looking forward to forever. Their classes, as we were talking about before the meeting, the paths fail or not, and they have to make these decisions. They don't know if they're gonna have a job when they get out. These kids, I mean, there's a lot of anxiety, a lot of stress. Of course, the parents of these kids are also having to deal with these issues, and they're stressed out. There's just a lot of, a lot of things that can cause people to do a lot of odd stuff. And watching the, looking at the police reports that come in daily from the chief, you're seeing more and more overdoses, domestic violence, calling the police about video games, and playing on video games too long. I was on today. And so there's a lot of, I think it's just gonna get worse. And so I told her, they need to put some efforts into the community, and I'm gonna say this also to Harris County, to understand that this isn't just a sickness, there's a lot of sicknesses there. So hopefully they address all that as well. And I think there's also concerns about the distribution chain, getting what you need to get. I mean, there's still not toilet paper, there's still not certain product, for instance, you can't find it anymore, it's crazy. If they say that the distribution chain is great, and all those other good stuff, why isn't it on the shelves? People are getting concerned. It's there, it's just that it's not getting here for something. But hopefully that gets resolved. I did talk to her, so if anybody, I'm gonna talk to her again tomorrow, so if anybody has any questions you want me to pose to her, happy to do it. She mentioned there's a lot of stumbling blocks within the state of Texas that are messing up some of these mills. And she didn't mention names of reps. I said, hey, if you mention the names, I'll call them too. I mean, equal opportunity call her. And I'll say, you know, why aren't you getting this done too? It hits both sides. So she is at least listening to what we're saying, and hopefully she can get something better. So keep an eye on Congress and see what happens there. So we're trying to, I'm trying to hit all the different layers, talk to all the different people. Of course, in the meantime, I'm trying to build my own business and figure out what's going on there, and, you know, we have to figure out what we're gonna do. As most places, we're shutting down, and if they can work from home, they work from home, keep as many people away from other people as possible. And I think Karen's gonna be getting into that for the city, and what we're gonna attempt to do there as well. And so, we did have a meeting with the chief, all the different Memorial Villages groups, get some of the chief and talk to him about his strategy and how he was approaching things, as usual, doing a great job. We haven't heard anything in particular from the fire department, I don't know if Chief if he's, or Keith, if you've gotten anything from the chief. He's put out some information by email, but I have not talked to him in detail, nor has he asked for a meeting amongst all the villages at this point that I'm aware of.
I have not, obviously, either. I'm trying to stay out of their care right now.
I'm doing the same.
Well, you know, he's like just like ready, he's got a lot on his plate, he doesn't need some, so half would answer him to his questions, so I'm relying on him to keep you informed. But I am in the dark, and if I stay in the dark, you know, another seven days, I probably will get my call.
And Karen, are you forwarding whatever the chief reports to you to Keith? Because I don't know if he's getting everything.
I have been, but I haven't done, I'll double check this week.
Okay. Does he have sent out some stuff to you?
Uh, Karen, I think I've given everything Karen gets based on the address list, but in excess of caution, Karen, just make sure.
All right, be back.
Go in for it, he's love.
Yes.
And he is giving the meeting information.
He is?
I have not been getting the meeting information.
Yes. Well, they need to get both of you on that, for sure. And we'll see where that goes. The fire department is really, they're the emergency management for us, and they're the ones sitting on the, like that stake hall that I do, the useful one, they, Howard's on that. He's currently away, but will be back, he's away for a wedding, but will be coming back. But he's our, Chief Howard Miller is our emergency management director now. And so he stays on Capitol.
He's going to an afterlife?
Yeah, in Philadelphia, I mean, in Pennsylvania.
No, his grandbaby.
Grandbaby, I forgot what it was.
Yeah.
It was a grandbaby. I got it mixed up.
Yeah.
No, the first one was.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it, my fault.
So he, that's having a new grandbaby, as of Monday, that's great.
So, okay, good.
Yes.
That's great. And he drove with his wife out there.
His wife was supposed to go out there and be with his daughter, and so they decided to drive instead, so.
And if he has to, he'll leave the car, get on a plane, come back, that's what he offered. So he's willing to go above and beyond the call of duty. Kudos, kudos to him. Let's see, any other meetings that I had? We had our mayor's lunch. At the mayor's lunch, I mean, it seems like it eons ago, because of the event of COVID, because it wasn't a big deal when we had the lunch. What was discussed was traffic. We were discussing a solution to the traffic issues throughout the villages. In particular, the fact that post-Harvey, a lot of the traffic off of I-10 and when they have access on I-10 has changed, and a lot of it's routed through ways or these other apps through the villages. And also, apparently, it's a problem spring violent hillshire. They're using those as arteries to go north, they're using others to go south. And if we can come up with some sort of collective solution to that problem, be it through the Houston Galveston, yep, yep, or other possibilities that we could talk about for a local solution, or through Metro, and figuring out what they can do to get it resolved. And the Mayor Hillshire Village is the one that's really pushing it. He gave me a passage right before all this stuff happened, I had to get it back to him. And, but he wants to talk about things we can do, but I think that's been pushed down the important level. But if you got any ideas on transportation, or ways to improve, or slow down the traffic through the villages, of course, we have Gassner, Laylock, that affect us, Boss, affects Hunters Creek, and Memorial, and Bunker Hill, yep. So, any thoughts you have there, in your spare time, that you could be sitting at home more? Feel free to comment on that. I know the chief has been trying to do some stuff on the enforcement side, but I don't know if there's a longer solution. He's a big fan of speed bumps, and we're not, and I told him that flat out, so there's studies on it, so we'll see where it takes us.
You also participated in that West Houston summit?
Yes, yes, the Representative Murphy has a summit, or it's a leadership summit, where he invited folks from all these different high schools, juniors and seniors, that came, and it was primarily to introduce them to the concept of, at least in our, we did the breakfast, and at the breakfast meeting, it's introducing and networking and icebreakers, and how to interact with somebody, first impressions, and how to put your best foot forward. And it was funny, because most of the people who get nominated, they get nominated by people and their teachers and counselors at the schools, and so these are the better students, a lot of them are introverted. I'd say half, maybe three-quarters of the people on my table were definitely introverts. So it was interesting to see them trying to engage. Remind me of my daughter. And I was sitting there, it was pretty funny. But needless to say, it was a good event, there was, it was more people than I thought would attend, it was very, very crowded. The whole, I don't know if you've been to the Norris Conference Center, but they have a big banquet room, one of the biggest rooms, and it was standing room with these little round tables, it was about three-quarters full of kids. I'd say two-hundred-plus students at the event, it was, and then all the, pretty much all the mayors, and former mayors even, of the villages. The former mayor of Hunters Creek was there.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, Wegman, I think, yeah, he was there. Brian was there, from Hunters, from Peckwood Village, somebody else, I think her one. But it was a good, good event. We have a picture, we should try to get it from the Representative Murphy. There was a picture of all the participants that attended. But needless to say, it was a good event. A lot of them were kids from the, there was kids from Alley, Kincaid, Straight Jesuit, St. Agnes, Memorial, all the way down to Katy. I didn't know he was down that far, but apparently he's down into Katy, because we had single ranch people, and where are some of those other schools now? Can't remember them all. But all the Katy schools were there as well. So this district must run that way.
There were no Duchenne girls?
There were some Duchenne girls. Very few, but they were there.
Okay, then those one did here.
Yeah, they were there, they were there. So it was a good picture of Brian and Phoebe, it was a nice man. I mean, they definitely, it was a cool event. I actually was planning to be there all day, but my daughter's playing in the final quarter of the state basketball tournament, so I went for that, and they didn't do it as well. But they, they played the village school, and the last time they played, they lost like fifty, this time they only lost like nineteen, actually, nineteen, they got under twenty, and I told my daughter that I would take her to a nice place if they got under twenty, and.
Nineteen.
That's how it works, right? Whenever you make a bet, they go, so I should have said lose by less than five. So that is all for the activities and upcoming events, I think, right?
Karen, that's it, yes.
Next thing is, we're gonna consider a possible action to reschedule our May meeting, so that we can, oh, we don't even have the candidacy election.
Well, that's right, we put that on there in case we wanted to continue to have a May 2 election. Right now, the May meeting is May 19. But we can keep it as is, we don't even have backup this time.
Yeah, I think, wait, wait, any discussion on it? You wanna leave it as is? Anybody have any strong opinions? Okay, let's keep it as is. So we're gonna leave it May 12.
May 19.
May, not May 19, sorry.
Why would we go back to the election, if things, if the situation has changed?
Because we still have to hold it. This is Karen Glenn, and because of the.
You want to repeat the question?
Yes. The question is, does it make sense for us to just hold the May 2 election now that we did have an intent to withdraw? But it's too late to withdraw for the May 2 election. So regardless, if we have it May 2, we still have to hold it regardless if someone wants to withdraw now, because that's all set.
We prefer to see if we can, we can cancel the election, we push it to November.
We're hoping that by moving it to the November election, we can ask Governor Secretary of State and see if there's a means now to accept the withdrawal. There's, they said specifically they cannot change, you know, the application deadline in terms of someone applying, but we want to be able to see if we can work with Olson and Olson and see since the withdrawal took place, if that may be different.
Then we won't have an election that costs associated therewith, and then worst case scenario, we should piggyback on the Harris County.
We have to have it.
It'll save, it'll save money as well.
Right. So anyway, and that just came today.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll just leave it as is, no action?
No action.
Take no action? Okay. And then we have our committee reports. I think most of the committees are taking a hiatus, but I believe Councilmember Roosevelt didn't have a beautification committee, is that correct?
Yes, yes, we did have a meeting. Several things are, were interesting. Apparently, there's been some leftover money to the, where the FKK had not, what's in my hand? FKK had not carried through over, so there's actually more funds in the beautification than our normal 25,000. So that is a really exciting thing. This is all before this whole virus thing has taken place, but I think the thing that we need to make careful awareness of is that we need to extend the pre-arbor walk, and we don't technically, I just need you guys to be aware of it, I don't believe we actually have that action on it, since the money is already there, but I'd like to go ahead and extend the walk, arbor walk, and continue.
Oh, you know what, I had a great view of the streetlights.
Yep.
What did you say?
What did you say?
You said something about streetlights?
To more trees, fewer streetlights.
Yeah, more trees, fewer streetlights.
Okay, well.
And third degree.
Well, we are going to be adding more trees on Royal Drive, we will be continually, continuing the Cobra lights. They are trying, we're trying to get from Bright Forest to the west side, just on the Royal Drive, a consistent color of light, an inconsistent light, so particularly around curves. So I believe Steve can address this probably better than I, but we're gonna start at the water plant on the Royal Drive, and move east again with those lights until they meet up with the existing, you know, the newer ones that were heading west. Because the curve at the water plant is very dark, and so we are lighting up that area, and then we're gonna continue eastward with the regular lights again. Eventually, we will get all the Royal Drive done, and then we will have a consistent color of lighting, a consistent pole, just in Bunker Hill. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
Have we gone ahead, and do you need authorization to go ahead, to end the budget, to go ahead and approve, write the check to Center Point, or have you already done that?
We've already presented that to council, and was approved, so the checks are already in their hands, and they're ordered.
Perfect, perfect. In addition to that, I don't know if anyone's noticed, but the, with Pipe Point, they completed the landscaping, the joint landscaping project. It came out really, really, really nice, I'll tell you. I thought it looked exceptional. So if you haven't had a chance, and you're sitting around, you're home, you're bored to tears, go drive real slowly up the Royal Drive, to the, to Bright Forest, and between Bright Forest and Laylock, you will see all the new landscaping, and it came out really lovely.
I agree. I said I agree. I commented on it earlier, yeah, looks great.
Okay. So we will be adding some trees, add, we're gonna be adding a trash can where needed, we're putting in all the arbor walk, we'll do some sprinkler system. And timing couldn't get worse, and every time I think that I can do a, some art for the city, or something interesting in the city in that way, something happens, whether it be a heartbeat, or a virus, but at some point, the beautification would be like, and I will come back to you and let you know the exact cost, but we are, we have looked at some possible art for the city. And I still think it will be really special if we could get specific pieces of art in specific areas. And so that, that I'm really, really excited about, and would like to get done at some point. But again, the, this timing couldn't be worse because of the virus. Uh, but again, the, this timing couldn't be worse because of the virus, um, but wait till it a few months, maybe I can get it tempered, so, um, so we'll be happy here, just someone, just somebody. Uh, also, um, we, um, had been talking about, um, some future plans, like three to five year plan, and, uh, that would be nice, uh, as well. Am I giving anything else, Steve?
Uh, we are doing a dedicated tree, uh, along Blaylock, Taylor Crest Corner.
Well, that's for the, um, mayor.
That's correct, ma'am.
And, um.
Who did it? I actually met with, uh, Mayor Williams, uh, and we selected the site there, kind of where there's a pull-off area along Blaylock, uh, and if you've driven by there recently, uh, we had cleared out some of the dead, uh, disease trees on that corner, so it's opened up a little bit more, uh, but, uh, kind of the goal there is to reforest that area, you know, and take all those trees that were dying out of there. So we've got one tree there already, uh, that we planned from Center Point, from the right, right tree, right place, kind of programmed that they, we just painted it a few years ago, uh, and this tree will be, uh, about twenty feet farther south than that. Uh, City Cruz installed irrigation system last week, so we do have irrigation there. We already had irrigation system for the corner, this, this landscape.
Oh, that looks really nice.
It does.
I, I'm so glad that we, um, you.
It, it did turn out. So we, we, our plan is to plant more trees there on that corner, that area.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm hoping to more of them on Taylor Crest, then on Blaylock, since Pipe Point, uh, Blaylock, um, I really don't feel like I need to be treeing too much. I mean, the mayor has decided where he wants it, and I'm happy to, you know, put it where he wants it, but that's technically, I point, not in Bunker Hill, so I'm looking forward to just doing more of the Taylor Crest location unless the Blaylock's open. What?
Uh, sidebar, sorry.
So, anyway, I, uh, we'll be hopefully adding some more trees. Uh, in addition to that, we also have gotten some money from, um, our contractors who are building homes, who have to, you know, put the trees in their own lock and, and to overgrown, so they're putting towards a tree fund, uh, for the city, and we've gotten about sixteen thousand, say, first, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
And so I'm gonna start placing those trees once I get out of quarantine. Um, you know, I'm just, I'm just stuck here, I can't go out and say, let's go through here, here, and here, um, unless these tents are out, you can wait for me, I have too many preconditions, so, um, I'm pretty housebound. Um, but I do think we may go out and look at, um, some bluebonnets and, uh, take another drug out, look at some bluebonnets.
So we're looking at the lawn, any lawn Blaylock lane, and that one back there, that'll be a factor there?
Uh, I've talked with local residents, that they are not.
They're not anymore?
Yeah.
They're active, is he, ma'am? We'll talk about it.
Uh, one other thing that we're going to do is we're putting in a, a new fence of the, um, Taylor Crest, uh, I mean, the Memorial, uh, Water Plant, so that we can.
Oh, yeah. That's one of the activities, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll, I'll address that, and if that, the idea is so that that period will work better.
It needs to, yeah.
Well, we're working on it. So, okay, that's it.
Okay, beautification's done, Technology Committee, I believe, we're canceled.
We were scheduled, we were scheduled for morning, so we canceled.
Any hot activities?
No, nothing at the moment, at this point.
Okay. And Public Safety Committee, Pete?
It's not me.
Hey there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we're late, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, you feel a little bit, uh, 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 what's that, I'm sorry, good, uh, but, uh, uh, we are on hold, we hope that we can reschedule our, uh, uh, meeting for the end of April, and have everyone in to do what we're going to do in large and updates on, uh, COVID and the other threats to us in the fall, uh, be it pestuines, uh, stork, or otherwise.
When's our next meeting, Karen?
For the.
Public Safety.
We have not rescheduled a, a meeting yet, so.
Yeah, we haven't rescheduled, and, uh, I don't think we will, we're in there until, we know, uh, uh, if this COVID thing is done, because we'll probably wonder as to respond to that when we have that meeting.
Yep. Makes sense.
Okay.
And then, Terania and she's gonna report on that.
I can do that report. Uh, Karen Glenn, and we met on Tuesday, March tenth, and that meeting went very well. Um, as we talked before, the city is, the committee is focusing on our design standards. We're working with Clos, following our action at the last meeting to update our model, and we are hoping to have the model completed and report to the committee in May. And so we'll work through some issues with the committee and then bring back, uh, the report to the city council. Uh, but we have had some good project updates. Our Blaylock Lane project is completed, residents are very happy with that project. The Bunker Hill inlets have been completed, and our ditch work and the Stoney Ridge, uh, all of that work has been completed as well. So everything, uh, all of the residents are very, very pleased with the, the work of those local projects that we were able to do this year.
Any, any further work planned?
Not right now, Caroline Chapel Bell.
Yeah, Chapel Bell?
Chapel Bell, um, that is in our capital project for design this year, and we have received the proposal from our P S on that. We're just putting that on hold for a little while, uh, just to kind of get, uh, warrants and the kilt and ballot star completed, and make sure all of our budget numbers are good, and, um, be ready to go there. Even if they're over on the street. They are putting in the water line. That's the water line project. So if they are doing the water line first, we went ahead and authorized that as a part of the change order, and so now it'll just be a street drainage project when we do go to design.
Yeah, I asked over visiting, but, I'm asking you, I'm answering, though.
Eric, Eric, who's?
It helps.
Yes.
Was Angela with you? I actually didn't, yeah, and it, and it's still a reactive committee, uh, everybody attended, um, and I'm happy to see that, and, uh, they were happy that the one project is completed and the two are getting ready to be done. There's still, um, with that modeling, I think there's a lot of planning and, and evaluation of the previous project we did, just verification of our, of our, uh, our plan and, and our, uh, ties to master plan. And there was also discussion of starting the next.
Phase of the.
Phase of the master plan. That's something that, uh, we have to work on as well, because we've now taken care of the worst, now we gotta care out the next leg.
What's our next phase?
And I, I think the next phase is gonna involve, um, cooperation with a lot of different entities, so it's gonna require some rolling up sleeves and some politics, uh, so it'll probably need a lot of help, um, it's not something that can be done quickly. And so, if anybody has some inclination to get to know either H, uh, you know, City of Houston, Hedwick Village, uh, who else is gonna be involved? Harris County, uh, School District, if anybody has people or knowledge of people in those areas who wanna roll up their sleeves and help with it, we will need probably council number two. Uh, I'm willing to, to pitch in, uh, we get at least a couple of committee members to pitch in, um, but it's gonna take a lot. And then, fortunately, uh, William at Clos, or formerly Clos, does now, is he with Harris County or is he with the?
Yeah.
Any of these companies?
Elland.
Yeah, another engineering company, but working very closely with the drainage project with Harris County, knows what we're trying to do, and so I'll probably help with that one, but if people have other ones that they wanna roll up their sleeves and help with, like, I think.
What is it?
What's the timing of, of doing that?
What is it?
The, the other project, it's, it's gonna be Taylor Crest, and, and Taylor Crest and Bunker Hill, uh, uh, storage and, and Bunker Hill Elementary, the storage.
Well, they were supposed to be working through some of their plans, but now with everything else going on.
Isn't that meeting, is it tomorrow? It's still on my calendar, tomorrow.
No, the, no, the school, this, this school planning meeting was.
Is that still happening? Uh, it, it's still on my calendar. Do you have it?
No, but, yes, that got canceled, I am so sorry. Yeah, that's, that's what our, why?
That's tomorrow, but, yeah.
I need to.
They're, they're actually two weeks due.
But that's, that's that part of the, and when that takes care, uh, now the other option is going to Blaylock. I mean, you've got the Blaylock, so that's gonna take a lot more money and a lot more cooperation, uh, but as far as between the villages, we're probably at the peak of cooperation with the other villages, so now's the time to kind of act on that and try to get some agreements in place between villages, and then we have the Harris County where the money is, they've got all that money to get approved, uh, and trying to get that, uh, and then the.
But I'm, I'm afraid a lot of these money's gonna be real headed.
Uh, I don't know how easy that's gonna be. I don't know how easy that's gonna be, but we'll go find out. Yeah, when you're talking about, you know, a bill of, you know, two billion, ten billion, and now trillion, with a T, is what they're talking about at the federal level, ooh, how are we ever gonna pay this back? It'll be fun. Our kids will be paying, it's gonna happen. All right. So that's Drainage Committee, uh, next up?
City Administrator's Report.
Okay, uh, there's been a lot of talk about the coronavirus, and the mayor and I have been talking through just our essential services, what are those services, how do we continue those in place, and, uh, we are in good shape with all of our, our water system, our wastewater system, like, we are in touch with Texas Project for Trash Collection, uh, also our pest control. We are continuing to do all of our mowings with yard works, and, uh, so just understanding what order was today, and the mayor has asked us to just, you know, look at what our activity is here in the city. We have not really been seeing a lot of residents come in, uh, water bills were paid, were due last week, and so a lot of that can be done online, so that's all been taken care of. The building permits, uh, continue to be busy, uh, Steve's been busy with that, but we are just taking different actions, uh, making sure we're talking to anybody behind the window, uh, Steve's gonna really do more of his pre-development meetings, either online or we're gonna talk through, you know, which ones really need to take place. Uh, they have been doing the spacing, but with some of this other order, we just wanna make sure everybody's feeling comfortable with that. We've had talked to all of the staff one-on-one and just kind of talked through, uh, how they were feeling about everything. Uh, the guys are great out back, they're outside, we're also talking with them about driving separately, um, using city cars coming back and forth now, and so we're working through all of those details. We're also looking at what the other cities are doing and just trying to be a little consistent there. So as you know, last week I did, I spent the week at home, working from home, that worked very well, and so, uh, we're seeing, you know, is there something that some of the other staff can do, uh, remotely, uh, if needed as well. So we're gonna take the rest of the week and really kind of see where our data is and our trends, and, uh, then see if there's any changes we may need to make, uh, following.
And more than likely, we'll, we'll kind of cease operations on a, a daily basis or have emergency things happen. But Karen, the, the plan is that Karen or Steve here every day, as well as the guys, uh, so that they can take care of any public work issues, um, and, uh, direct people to websites. Uh, we also asked Karen not to shut off anybody's water if they don't pay the bill, uh, we don't want people without water in a period of time, uh, as well as any other, you know, bills that result in a negative consequence, so we'll just postpone any actions on, you know, by nature, um, during this period of time.
We've met with all of our inspectors, um, they also.
Their reception's gonna continue.
There's a lot of, you know, they said everybody's taken their precautions, and so, uh, that's been good, but, uh, court has been suspended, and that's, you know, throughout.
That's the big one.
So, anyway, so, um.
And that's for indemnity at this point, so makes sense.
So we'll just keep monitoring everything and see if there's any other changes that need to be made.
And I think Steve's able to roll phones to people if, if we end up sending them home.
Or email.
Or email.
Inspections come in via email, uh, we believe that we can access our system and input things and put the, uh, daily logs, uh, things that we need to.
And then all committee meetings are basically being canceled until further enough. There's no reason to hold it.
So yes, we, uh, did have a planning and zoning commission meeting set for next week. Uh, as we looked at the agenda, they're working through some of the issues, uh, with our conditional use permit idea and, uh, parking, but all of those things can be delayed if needed. The one area that we do have is we do have a, um, application for a specific use permit, and so we've been working with that applicant, and that does go through the P and D process. So, uh, that will be the only thing that would be put on, would be put on hold, but hopefully that may just be, uh, two weeks later, so. Um, okay, our, uh, on other items, our refunding did take place last week, and I did provide y'all the summary of, um, of the results there. Uh, we refunded the five point three million dollars, and, um, uh, we are seeing a savings over the ten years of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So we really hit that at the prime time, and I did ask Drew Masterson, uh, I was like, man, should we, uh, we have waited just a little bit, and he said, Karen, it is free, nobody is under one percent. And in fact, Claire and I were talking today, um, we have some investments in CDs that are coming up next week, and the bank will not be rerate this. So that money is just gonna go to our banking account for right now, which is probably the best place for it to be.
At least it's not the market.
Fine. So, anyway, but, uh, so this was, uh, we've got some excellent results here, uh, savings of sixty thousand dollars a year in our debt service line, so we will be working through that as we plan for our, uh, that year, twenty twenty-one, and, uh, we are also set up our first payment for April first, and so, um, everything's going well with that, so we're very, very. And, um, very thankful for our team, um, Andrew Skirr and Masterson, that are a great job with all of everything, Stephanie Skirr, so, real good team, and still our finance.
It was, and we worked very quickly to do that, uh, as finance committee, so it worked really well. Time could've been better.
Our auditors, uh, were here last week, and I have to say Claire has done an excellent , uh, working with the audit and helping us tie everything down from twenty nineteen. Um, our, gonna have an accident coming up on our, um, budget adjustments that we do at the end of the year, things that were over, things that were under, um, so anyway, uh, but that has gone very, very well, and, uh, we just have a list of things they still need it, and we think we should be wrapping up the audit this week. They didn't come back this week, so, uh, we feel really good about that, and, uh, so anyway, very, very.
That'll be, that'll be next meeting, we'll do the, the.
Probably, depending on how this goes, we'll wanna come to the, uh, financial audit committee, so probably May, is, is when, typically they'll do it until June, but now if they didn't, we should probably be able to do it.
And finance be in April?
In April.
Be around April. Be around April.
So that's what I was hoping for. And, um, Steve, do you wanna go over the capital project?
Sure, just a couple of quick comments. I met with, uh, the contractor of the Warren Hills project this morning as well as our construction manager, Captain Roy Sethel, and we were down to three very small items on the Warren Hills portion of the project. And so we made the decision to go ahead and open those roads up, uh, to traffic both lanes. Uh, and one of the things that affected that is that with everyone being home and cars being there and like, you know, let's get this over with. So they began with that provision, so, uh, probably four more years when we remove and two lanes should be open. We are still working through the change order portion that where we moved up onto Valley Star. Uh, contractor is really playing that by ear right now as to what he can and what he can't do. We'll probably have that conversation again tomorrow morning to see.
Oh, he's worried about the work?
He's worried about the work.
So he's ready to do it every month?
Uh, he is, but we're trying to make sure that we don't create a situation where he started past the start.
Correct.
The good news is we're opening up Warren and so if we do decide to take the, the Valley Star portion out of service and track it has to be rerouted, we've got a full function script there to put that down. The other part of the change order is the, uh, portion where we added the Chapeldale Waterline and the Windshire, uh, Waterline. The water, the new water lines are in place. They have been tested, they've been standardized. And so the contractor is expected to have all of the existing water meters switched over to the new water line by the end of this week. Uh, and so that, uh, project will quickly come to a conclusion there.
Delete some of that.
Delete some of that, we did pressure test, we used to test it twice, the operating pressure, make sure there's no leaks or anything like that. I do need to report on one little, little, uh, project that we had, uh, that's not part of the capital, but just wanna raise it to your attention. We had a call last week with a wastewater stop in the delivery bell circle area. Uh, we, uh, quickly got our on-call contractor working on it as well as our, our crew. And that line has been repaired. It was a little bit more expensive than what we were expecting. We have to invoice today. Uh, and it's about a thirteen thousand dollar range to do that repair. And we were probably expecting, uh, somewhere in the seven to eight thousand, but, uh, there was one little portion of the line that, uh, there are actually two collapses on the line rather than one. And so, uh, that's been repaired, house has been reconnected, uh, and, and that is complete.
Incidence, Mr. Breckman?
And that is all that I have, uh, that's not on the agenda, that's some of the.
The only other one is, uh, water well number three?
Water well number three, we are planning to start that mid-overup in the morning.
Nice.
Uh, so, uh, the one here is called, ever talking about extension in the over. We are not putting that well back in service, we're starting that. We, we've got the electrical patches done, we're gonna test it and then we'll have to do a pressure test and then a restoration.
So all is that safe to put it actually in, in the operation?
Assuming that we don't have any restrictions because of laboratories or anything like that, we'll be there another week.
Okay. And then that fills the which tank?
This one by the seaport.
And what about the dais?
This?
Yes.
That's an excellent question. I don't know that I can give you an update on that. We have rescheduled and rescheduled and rescheduled. Uh, we originally had it scheduled, uh, two weeks ago, we had the contractors vehicles sold like before we were supposed to start with all the tools and all the materials. Uh, since then, they've tried to come back in and we canceled them because the port changes and various things like that. And so they had, uh, originally promised to be back in tomorrow, uh, but I had not heard from them today and quite honestly, I haven't been able to remember. Their problem today, so we've been busy with that. So I don't know when our next expected installation will be.
And we are not forgetting about some of our code issues, uh, in particular, um, the, the pool, the force bug, we've got a couple of ladders out on some code enforcement with swimming pools. Ever, that processes the municipal court process on several of them, which pushes them out a little bit. So anyway, so, uh, but they're on our pending list and I know that, um, they're going to.
For support.
I have not heard from Memorial Forest on adjusting those lights and we need to work with Lauren and see if we heard anything back from them.
Yeah, worth it. I mean, yeah, it should be around. I've heard anything from the neighbors either, though.
I, I know, yeah. Okay, it's our report.
Thank you. Next?
Consideration and possible action on approval of resolution number zero three dash two four dash twenty twenty A. The resolution accepting the dedication of a ten-foot drainage easement at one one six one four Blaylock Lane, the installation of drainage and drainage.
Hey, council, this is the, uh, last portion of the Blaylock, uh, drainage, uh, drainage project that we did. And what we said, we, we've got a discussion, we've had rights of entry from the, from the property owner there. And so we, after it was in place, we had a survey, the heat was drawn up and they're all signed and used to be, uh, the city's will approve them and then our attorney will move forward with filing.
So on the right side of the project?
Oh, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, we originally had everybody on the other side of the survey and picked that one up instead of the one they just.
This is all right?
This is right.
Okay. So we'll give the public opportunity to speak on this particular item. Any comments? No, not seen any comments. Uh, need a motion. I move to accept resolution number zero three dash two four dash twenty twenty A, accepting the, uh, drainage. Okay, we got a motion from Congress. A second from council member, uh, Schwartz, uh, any further discussion? Uh, here in any, uh, vote, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anywhere opposed? No, passing unanimously. We now have these.
Next, consideration and possible action regarding ordinance number twenty dash five two two and ordinance of the city of Bunker Hill Village, Texas, adopting amendment numbers one through five to the original budget of the city of Bunker Hill Village, Texas, for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, providing detailed line item increases or decreases, providing severability and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Okay, so we have ordinance book four new and there are five amendments, uh, this year. The first one is the general fund and those are all of the areas up at the top that were an increase in our line item this year. Um, you'll see that probably the most significant one is the fire department and that we did have a budget amendment that we said we would take that out of our, you know, emergency fund. And so we did make that change here, um, our professional fees, inspections, um, those were increased. But you also saw a revenue increase because we had, uh, more building permits this year. We were over in our engineering and in our, um, legal fees this year. Um, a lot of projects, some code issues and just different things that we had, um, that we worked with, with Lauren.
And also note here that some of that, that expense is offset by the increase in, in, in revenue from the building permits.
Okay. Oh, on the.
On the, on the, on the, on the.
Right. Um, so these are the items that were over. This is where we are, we were under and were able to balance the budget overall in the general fund. Um, as we look at the year end, um, we are seeing, uh, about, after all of our reserves, our sixth month reserve, the emergency management reserve is less because we did do the budget amendment. Uh, police department has a reserve of about a hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, we separated this year our vehicles and our facilities. And so right now, after our reserves, we should have about a hundred thousand dollars that would go into capital projects. Uh, we need to really kind of tie that down because some of our CFP goes over various years. So we'll be doing that as we finish up the audit, okay? In the, uh, utility fund, or I'm sorry, amendment number two is our debt service fund. Our walking thirty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents, we were over on interest expenses. Um, so that is that amendment, number two. Number three is our utility fund and the same thing here. Um, one is the vehicle purchase, uh, and that was, we received, um, some of our funding in twenty eighteen. Then we got the truck, actually took possession and wrote the check in twenty nineteen, uh, so that was one. The water meters, we did make a change in our water meters this year and we actually saw more builders coming in for water meters. Correct, Steve? Uh, so, uh, we have that and then we also have our capital, uh, reserves and our, our transfers to the fund, to the capital projects. So that's number three. Uh, number four, uh, is the beautification and our public safety. Uh, and then our instructors, what we took that out and that was, and the capital, general fund capital projects fund. Um, the last one, number five, is our metro fund and that was when we did budget amendment funds three five. And so, uh, we had an increase in our capital projects there. So those are the five, uh, budget adjustments, amendments, uh, for twenty nineteen.
So at this point, we need a motion to adopt amendment one three five of the original budget. Timmy, have any questions? Karen? Mail in? So I need a motion.
Uh, make a motion, please. Steve, uh, adopt the back of the amendment.
Any second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion from council member Schwartz and a second from council member Rosa Baum regarding this, ordinance to accept, adopt amendments one through five. Is there any public discussion? Nope. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You on opposed? All right, passes. Thank you for your word. Next up, Steve? No, I need for me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, just cut. Okay, um, consideration and possible action on approving a one-year contract extension with Yard Works Inc. and continuing the same rates for landscape services, including right-of-way maintenance, esplanades, and city hall memorial religious police department facilities for the timeframe April one, twenty twenty through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one at a base amount of ninety-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and not to exceed an amount of thirty thousand dollars for additional work and mowings as needed.
Hey, council, so the current contract with our going and last year contractor Yard Works expires in March. Uh, the contract does allow us to have one more twelve-month extension as part of the original contract that we, uh, signed with them. Uh, we did talk with Yard Works and they agreed to maintain their current prices and we'll increase for additional twelve months to April first. And the amounts that are shown there are the, the base amounts. Uh, we did increase the amount for the additional items swiping, uh, as, uh, as we tried to predict what's gonna happen in the next twelve months. Sometimes we did, sometimes we don't, depending on the number of voting that, that people are expecting and the weather provides for us those type of things. And so that amount did go up slightly from what we were authorizing for our, that they are maintaining the current cost. In fact, they have a kind of price increase since we signed the contract for years, four, three, three.
They do really do.
Does it?
And, and let me just add to that, if you will recall what kind of issues do you have or priorities for that?
I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Not only do they do a good job, but they do a good job and that's, that's huge.
And this is one of the services, especially, uh, right now with everybody being at home and really using the trails. They, they're keeping that mode, they, uh, also pick up the trash along areas. And so it is one of those services that really, and I think it really makes a difference for us, especially when we go through some of these, um, crazy times.
I think, uh, council member Brown had a comment.
Who is that?
You move to accept?
Oh, what?
We have a second? Okay, so we have a motion from council member Brown and a second from council member Schire and Schwartz. So any public comment on the Yard Works contract? Not seen any, uh? All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? If.
Hey, consideration and possible action to authorize the city administrator to approve a contract with triple A asphalt for road ring, road ring repairs on Memorial Drive and other possible locations in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand.
Steve, just Steve's asking for more money.
So if you haven't noticed, we've got a segment of Memorial Drive between Plantation and Gesser that is asphalt kind of in front of Crosswood there, that we've been seeing some base covers throughout that region. Some of it may be as a result of the more controlled project, traffic getting rerouted, doesn't kind of take that up. Sure, I identify that cause, but we've got some pressures going on there. We also have some other high areas around the city, uh, upper and roads, capital spots there. Uh, as well as I think there may be one other location on Memorial Drive.
It was our N D C there, that's what we turned off him.
And, and so this amount is, uh, an amount to address those items as a change order through the Warrington Hills.
No, 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 this is through here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
Cause it's asphalt.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Sorry.
Uh, through our on-call contract through Harris County, uh, this is the same contractor, the Warrington Hills, triple A asphalt. Thank you.
And Steve, um, I'm a little confused, we're, we're doing three different locations?
This is primarily the area of Memorial Drive between Plantation and, and Gesser. We repaid that entire strip of Memorial, it's about five lanes wide right here there.
And then that's all ours?
That's all ours.
It's ours out there, yeah.
And, and then the other location would be ours as well, uh, through audit, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Steve, if this is changed, would it include the rest of the?
It. It will.
Uh, it may not be the intersection.
We, we are not including money for the intersection in the area that would be repaid would, would be.
Where's yours, right? The intersection isn't.
How far is the restocking gonna go? Should we restrike the little first and beyond? The repaving? Cause that, that, that whole area is, uh, horrible, sorry.
Uh, we. And should we put those buttons?
We, we can do, the buttons are not, uh, a huge additional amount. We've got some contingency at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Will you not have enough there for restriking intersection? Last time we restriked Gesser intersection, it was around a fifteen thousand dollar.
Well, not yet. Well, what about just taking it back?
Of course we can.
Towards Crosswood and even towards Forest Club?
It, it includes that.
It does, okay. I was wondering how far back, cause it's really bad in that whole area.
It does include that entire section, Plantation and Gesser.
Steve, I'd like to go ahead and make sure we put the buttons in.
Uh, for the, for the Warrington curve, we, we did include this already in the Warrington project.
No, I'm not, I mean, the button, the little, fancy little button that'll reflect it and crosswalk, the example, like your plantation.
Like the red ones, like stop signs?
We can't, we can't do red reflectors on, on.
But we can do lights.
I, I'm gonna have to get you some others on, on adding the lights there, because we, when you look at, I, I'll be happy to get you something, uh, or that that we can have that connect to me.
Okay.
Does it need to be involved?
I mean, I always speculate if they want to do any sort of change.
Well, don't worry, you cross the wall.
Right.
It's already, it doesn't make a crosswalk.
You're talking across Memorial?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Plantation where the light is.
Right.
Yeah.
Going across wood, elementary?
Yes, which you can cross over the crosswood.
We're gonna get the school to fund dad's boat.
Uh, they don't have it.
No, they don't, okay. You already wiped them out?
I, I'm not.
I did.
Let me, let me make this statement, if, if I understand you correctly, you're just wanting some reflector eyes and crossing that stair and I will check with our traffic engineer and see if we can include it in this project.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion. There's not any further, oh, Jay, you, you have a comment?
I'll second.
What's that? Are you making a motion, okay?
No, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion from council member Schmeyer and a second from council member Brown.
Uh, I think the question, the city administrator, who's the contractor, who's the landlord of the asphalt, on roadway repairs, on the potential locations to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, council member Schmeyer made the motion, uh, to authorize the city administrator to approve a contract with triple A asphalt for roadway repairs on Memorial Drive and other possible locations in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, council member Brown, you second that?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, motion passed.
Next, consideration and possible action authorizing, wait, I'm sorry, consideration and possible action regarding the proposed twenty twenty beautification projects and budget as recommended by the beautification committee.
Who wants to go first, Laurie or Steve?
I'll, Steve handles it.
Steve?
Okay, in your package, we give you a, an update there on what's going on in the beautification, uh, funding and permitting. As, uh, councilor Rosenbaum reported, uh, and Russo, who declared, Claire has gone back and, and evaluated, uh, all of the prior years as far as the funding and found some additional money.
Yay!
As that, uh, we had not been properly rolled over into the account. And so, the beautification committee, uh, has a number of items, probably the largest one is guardrail three and it actually involves this item as well as the next item on the agenda. But one of the problems that we've had in the city is as we do these various projects, we have sort of forced our contractors to use that curb, the curb of Memorial Drive, Hickory Ridge, as the storage material, equipment, parking lot. And it just creates a safety recourse as well as, it's a cycling, as well as we have a, an old guardrail there that is totally in the wrong location and blocked out and it just, just doesn't work very well. City administrators, put it on the screen there, kind of what the site looks like, it's in your packet as well. The blue area, uh, should we, uh, bring the guardrail closer to Memorial Drive and then refencing that area is all the area that we would change as far as storage area. Now, uh, you can see sort of the diagram line there, that's where the existing guardrail is, it's way too far away from, from the roadway to be effective. And another interesting part is kind of the southern line of our well side is our city limit line as well. So, uh, this combination beautification project, roadway improvement project with the guardrail gains, all of that. Now, what, uh, as part of the beautification committee is the fencing, we leave the existing fencing in place to secure the well side, but add to it, uh, the black, uh, channeling fence like we have there from the city hall, the clean inserts, so that you can't see through it. We also do a little bit of landscaping here, reestablish the bottoms that are, that are in the area, uh, and that's what's included there. We did go through Timmy Horne, our traffic engineer, uh, new, I think, on the design of the, uh, guardrail. We did, uh, send this design out to several guardrail companies and we have received one proposal back and that's what you have to avoid there that, uh, that does act a part of that time. But for the beautification committee, it involves a fencing and leaving the, uh, landscaping there.
Anything to add, Laurie?
No, I didn't have to cover that.
Okay, um, is there any public comment on this particular action item?
Can we just, can I ask, can we just put, um, sixteen, seventeen together as one action item?
Well, the first item is approving the beautification budget and projects. And then the second one would be the guardrail.
That's all the project.
So, the first one is, right, to approve the.
Do you make the motion? Laurie?
Yes.
Okay, council member Rosenbaum made the motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Council member vote is a second. Um, any further discussion on this matter? If not, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Beautification as a budget.
Now that we have the money, let's just go ahead and, uh, commit.
She, let's let the, uh, let's let the secretary read the action.
Consideration and possible action authorizing the city administrator to approve funding in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand for the installation of new guardrail on Memorial Drive as recommended by the beautification committee.
Okay, I think we've already discussed this, um, is there any public discussion?
I guess, the, the only question I have is that if we're quick for this money, we have to, you know, get in committee because this seems like traffic control, doesn't it?
It, it is, it's through, uh, the, uh, roadway maintenance.
It would be under through maintenance.
Roadway.
The other thing that's going for beautification is an upscale, um, fencing, uh, instead of putting just a cheap cheap chain link fence there, uh, or upgrading it somewhat and that's just putting out the.
And the bottoms.
And the planting of vines, uh, as needed, maybe tree, we'll see.
That was my question, I couldn't figure out where twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars is separate.
Ten or sixteen.
Yeah, that was a twenty-five thousand dollar budget, yeah. It didn't, it didn't.
I was thinking, what, what did it cost?
A lot of money, I believe.
Yeah, well, this is about a ten thousand dollar.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, we, we need a motion?
Seven.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, council member Rosenbaum made the motion, council member Schwartz seconded the motion, um, not here, hear any further discussion, uh, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes the second amendment.
Next item, consideration and possible action on approving resolution number zero three dash two four dash twenty twenty B, a resolution by the city of Bunker Hill Village, Texas, suspending the May fourth, twenty twenty effective date of the proposal by Centerpoint Energy Resources Corp., D V A, Centerpoint Energy in Tex and Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas, Houston Division, to implement interim roadway adjustments for gas utility investment in two thousand and eighteen and require and delivery of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Karen, let's just take this one.
Okay, uh, yes, uh, Bunker Hill participates in a coalition of a number of cities in our area, um, we work with legal counsel and they monitor our, the utility rates and we received a request by Centerpoint Energy Gas, uh, to increase rates and, uh, the coalition is recommending, uh, the only action that we can do right now is delay the action on this. And so, the coalition is recommending that, uh, all the cities who can, uh, pass the, uh, resolution, ask Centerpoint to extend, um, the rate increase for forty-five days.
I don't know if they basically impressed on this, they sent something to me separately, um, that's all mayors trying to get us to understand how by failing to allow the increase in this rate, uh, they'll go out of business.
For forty-five days?
No, long term, out of business, so all teenagers makes it, uh, but they, they gave a very convincing argument written by their counsel of how this is going to cause traumatic problems within the industry. Um, I don't think that's necessarily true, but if you want to look it up, I was gonna tell folks, uh, volusis in this whole period is going to become more educated, there is a website out there dealing with the grip rates and, uh, there's also the counter to it, which comes through our coalition, um, uh, and I know Spring Valley, uh, Mayor Ramsay's a big, uh, component of not letting this happen, uh, as well as others, and T M L also is against it, there's several organizations that are against it, saying that this is, it's an attempt to, to just grab more money, kind of, almost just. Some will look into it if they want to, but, uh, I think if we have a, a motion to, to at least delay this, and I think in view of what we're dealing with, the economy and things of that nature, I think this is the right move. So, uh, any public discussion on this? Not seeing any, um, I'll go ahead and take a motion.
Seven.
Second, okay, uh, council member Rosenbaum made the motion, uh, to, to approve the resolution, uh, council member vote seconded, uh, now let's take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have now passed the resolution to suspend. Next.
Next, discussion and direction to amend the city's ordinance for fees collected for the vacant properties ordinance.
Okay, this is, I'm gonna report back to all of you, uh, feel remember in January, we received a, a letter and we also, uh, had public comment regarding our vacant property ordinance and, uh, the request to not or to waive the fee, uh, because they were, uh, that particular property, that vacant property was also located in an active H O A and so they were paying an H O A fee plus, uh, the city's vacant property fee. And at that meeting, um, council directed us to go back to P and Z and discuss that with them and see if there's, they thought that there was anything that we should do differently. Uh, the planning and zoning commission was unanimous in their decision and they do not feel that there should be a change and, uh, they just feel that the H O A plays a different role. Together, HOAs and cities can, uh, work very well together to, um, have the appropriate end result, but they don't feel that that's a, a need to actually waive the fee. Uh, they feel that HOAs are very different for our city and, um, and they just feel that the ordinance is good the way it is. They did comment that if there is some type of hardship that they could see that, but just because there's a H O A or there's a double fee, they do not feel that, uh, it was necessary to make that change.
Karen, how much money are you talking about?
This first year was.
The first year is five hundred dollars.
Now, can they come to council and seek a waiver?
And that is up to you, right now, the ordinance does not have a waiver. P and Z doesn't recommend a waiver other than for hardship, but that's where we wanted to get your direction, uh, do you feel it's reasonable for them to come to city council and get a waiver?
On your basis?
And do it on a case by case basis.
It's five hundred dollars, you have to know the people where, is that the deal?
I have no opinion on whether, I'll do it if the council believes, uh, I mean, our H O As are reactive, do monitor the situation, but as P and Z says, they're very different and different HOAs are gonna act differently and, and that's not gonna, if you have a, a rule collectively to deal with this, I don't think.
So, what is this deal, what's the deal?
I think that's the feel, it, it just, it didn't feel like it was.
Approximately nine bucks. So, it's the same size law mine, so I don't really know.
Yeah, mayor, uh, Mr. Keith Brown, uh, P and Z, you, this H O A assessment, uh, a lot like they do, need prescriptions, they want to keep a twenty-foot pole, uh, between the city and need prescriptions and H O A assessments.
I agree.
I certainly understand, it's, it's not a hardship on anyone to buy a lot of this one.
That's my reaction.
I mean, when a lot costs a million bucks, you're asking for five hundred bucks. Yeah.
The last way I got it, you know, if I had that a lot.
Oh, is it over a half acre, it's almost three quarters, it's like mine.
It's worth more than that, part of it, that's one too.
Not according to H C A, but depends who you are.
But pretty marvelous, it's worth a million dollars. The H O A fee is seven fifty, I'll happily pay.
Five hundred, man, they just dropped it.
I'll happily pay yours if you'll pay mine. I haven't seen the five hundred as a hardship.
Yeah, I don't see it as a hardship, uh, well.
Okay.
So, how do we proceed?
I wouldn't do anything, we just.
We don't change anything and then.
And ask them to pay.
And then I will let them know that there was, uh, no, you know.
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning and, uh, the city council did not recommend to change the.
They, they've already paid the fee.
No, they haven't, they have not. And that they did not recommend, uh, waiving fee.
And now, when they begin building on the premises, then.
Right, then it goes away.
Then it goes away, just let them know.
Right.
Because I prefer to have a house there.
It'll cost them a lot more dollars, but.
Yeah.
Because with an animal, five thousand's pretty.
Okay, so no action necessary on this one?
No.
Action taken, okay. Consent agenda, go ahead.
Consent agenda, why do you read that? I'm sorry. All compatriots listed for consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent, consent agenda and considered separately.
So, is there any desire to remove anything listed from the consent agenda much shorter than usual?
I agree with your president.
So, who wants to move and who wants to second, uh, votes?
I'll second it.
Okay, council member Schmeyer moved to accept the consent agenda as is, uh, council member Rosenbaum, uh, seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. And final motion, I'm moving with Karen. All right, we have two, we have two, uh, motions to Jen, to Karen, one by, uh, council member Rosenbaum and one by council member vote and I think the rest of council seconded, so, uh, all in favor? Anyone opposed?